Good evening, everybody. My name is Paul Kotsch, Chair of the North Andover Zoning Board of Appeals. Welcome to the meeting of Tuesday, whoops, that's not the right one, Tuesday, November, December fourteenth, right? There it is. So we open each meeting with a pledge of allegiance. Please, everyone, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, our nation, our God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Quickly, I'm just going to read the, you know, our opening salvo, all about procedures and stuff, so it's about eight single-spaced pages, eight single-spaced lines, sorry. Pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, this meeting will be conducted in person and via remote means in accordance with applicable law. This meeting of the North Andover Zoning Board of Appeals will be conducted both in person at the meeting at a location listed above and via remote participation. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website at www.northandoverma.gov. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to watch the meeting live may do so on their televisions by tuning into Comcast Channel Eight or Verizon Channel Twenty-Six or online at www.northandovercam.org. In-person attendance of members of the public and board members will be permitted, and every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real-time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on the town of North Andover website an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. If the public would like to participate in public hearings but not attend the meeting in person, please email your question or comment prior to, prior to, or during the meeting to, pick up your pencils, jbattersby@northandoverma.gov, J-B-A-T-T-E-R-S-B-Y at northandoverma.gov. The question or comment will be read during the proceedings and responded to accordingly. In the hybrid environment, we're going to be taking the rolls of every vote. We will not be having voice votes because we have three members, I believe, who are remote. I'm Paul Kotsch, Alan Kousha, Steve Siding, and Ron Kilole. Voices in the sky, who do we have? Do we have Ron Fagan here?
I am here.
Ellen McIntyre.
Present.
Alexandria Jacobs.
Here.
Thank you very much. You'll be hearing lots more of those folks, everybody in the audience. The, I think that's all the introductory stuff. The, for our second item on the agenda, since we've already called to order and done the pledge, the acceptance of minutes for November ninth, two thousand twenty-one. Is there any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, is there a motion?
I make a motion to accept the minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Kousha. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Steve Beatya, okay. Motion made and seconded. I will go up the roll because I have it somewhere. I think we have all the regular members in. So Ellen.
Yes.
Alexandria. Thank you. Alan, Alan Kousha.
Yes.
Mr. Fagan.
Yes.
And I am an I, so the meetings of the, the minutes of the meeting of November ninth, two thousand twenty-one are accepted. Next item on the agenda, the continued public hearing of five sixty-four Chikering Road. It had already been opened last month. So if we could have the petitioner come on up to the table.
My name is Peter March, New Hampshire signs, sixty-six Gold Ledger Avenue, Auburn, New Hampshire.
Brilliant. Thank you very much. And why don't you tell us where we've been in the last month?
So we continued the last variance hearing from November ninth, and essentially what we're asking the board to approve is the refurbishment of the signage at the Hafner site, five sixty-four Chikering Road, and to continue some, some existing illumination. We applied for permits to replace the canopy, canopy signage, ID signage, and pump toppers. The signs, ID and canopy have been, been internally illuminated for about fifty to twenty years. The size on the canopy signage was reduced from three hundred and twenty-three square feet to one hundred and two square feet, and the ID sign and the associated signage for the ID side, which includes some off, off-site price signs, were reduced by, were reducing by about fifty square feet, so there was net, net reduction. So the board made some requests at the last meeting. The first thing was on the canopy to eliminate the internally illuminated signage, but we, they saw no problem with the eyebrow lighting, which is a downlighting that washes over the entire canopy. So we've implemented that change. So those signs are now made of PVC plastic, and they're totally non-illuminated. The second request was made to downlight, externally eliminate the, sorry, my evil is a little washed up. So the second request was to basically externally eliminate that component and that component. So we're putting a light bar that shines out over this one, the light bar that shines down on that one. This section, we intend to internally illuminate, but all we're going to eliminate on that is the actual grade names and the actual names of the, the digits themselves. They have a toggle on that every fifteen seconds, correct it's a wash, no wash. And so again, that, the white letters are the only part that actually eliminate on that, apart from the red digits, there'd be no wash, wash, no wash. So that would be the previous night view of the previous submission. This is the night view of the current submission. You can see the wash, washing both down, add up on that side. So we've kept the center, center price as illuminated, but just the words were light, and the toggle will toggle every ten to fifteen seconds, wash or no wash. One of the points that was raised in the last meeting was the effect of pricing on fuel volumes. Without going into too significant detail, I've included some research from a couple of energy journals and various other sources, and they, bibliog, the bibliographies on that sheet. But basically, what they, these reports conclude is that the price elasticity for gasoline is high. In other words, if the price decreases, the volume increase, increases significantly. So a ten percent hike in the price of gasoline lowers quantity demanded by about two-point-six percent. In the long run, the price elasticity goes up to about five-point-eight percent. So for, for every ten percent hike in the ga, in the gasoline price over the year, medium term of the year, the demand will decrease at that particular station by five-point-eight percent. So on the way here, I drove down one fourteen, there's a global site. It advertises gasoline at about forty cents a gallon, less than the mobile site opposite. The mobile site had two cars, and the global site was actually queuing onto the road, and I, as I went by, I counted something like fifteen or twenty cars actually queuing for gasoline. And that's a local example of how gasoline prices affect demand. The other piece of evidence that I presented the board is a CNN article, and it dealt with the trend of grouping a service and gasoline together, and it quoted a Costco-type situation. It applies to this situation as well in that grouping a car wash and gasoline together has a significant effect on the demand for the gasoline, hence the reason that we're asking for that sign. So it applies again to the situation, the grouping of the, of the service, in this case, a car wash, and the gasoline has a significant effect on demand, hence our request for the, for this section to be internally eliminated, you know, the center section. So I'm happy to go into some of the details I did before, but in conclusion, if you don't want me to do that, in conclusion, I'd say that what we're doing is improves the appearance of the site substantially, improves clarity of the signage, it reduces the total area of the signage and thus clutter by about forty-five percent, it reduces the light output of the site by about fifty percent, and it also ensures the viability of this particular business.
All right, well, thank you, thank you for that. I appreciate you taking, taking the shortcut there because we did do, did do some, some work last time.
A few people, yeah.
A few more. So just relatively quickly, not, you know, I, I think I said so last time, and I remain not a fan necessarily of the sign design. I think it looks really sharp. Frankly, I think it looks sharp, but at night, the nighttime version, the daytime version still, to me, looks like a high school football field. But that's the thing, I'm not a fan of. What I am a fan of, however, is your attention to the board's requests, that you went through them, you implemented them, you discussed them. So it's always, I'm always grateful for an applicant. This, this may sound silly, should be table stakes, but it isn't always. I'm always grateful for, to an applicant who listens to the board, implements, and then comes back and tells us what he has or she has done. You've done that tonight.
Thank you.
I'm also a fan of the, you know, the light output is reduced, you know, by, by these numbers, light output is, is reduced significantly. I'm, I'm a complete fan of that. I'm a complete fan of all the, of the various, you know, the external illuminations. I'm a fan of the, you know, the, the downsizing of the, the pylon, I'm sorry, it's an identity, identity, is that the one?
Main ID pylon is fine, it is interchangeable.
So, so in spite of the fact that there's an element I don't like, there's an awful lot of other things that I do like. So thank, thank you very much for going through all of that stuff.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And any other questions from the board the applicant is certainly prepared to discuss?
I, I have a question, Paul. I was just curious, you said the prices are going to update every fifteen minutes. Is there a reason why it needs to be so?
It's fifteen seconds, ma'am.
Oh, fifteen seconds.
Fifteen seconds.
Is that, there's, is there that much variation in prices in fifteen seconds?
No, no, it toggles between the price that you would pay if you were, if you were buying a car wash, and then it reduces by approximately twenty cents. If you buy a car wash, increases by about twenty cents if you do not buy a car wash. So it's wash, you know, say three dollars, no wash, three dollars twenty, something, something of that sort.
Now, is that based on the, the speed of the road being?
Correct, correct. It's based on, it's based on the average visibility that a, a passing motorist would have.
So that's the noted speed, not the speed that people actually drive on that?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Ellen. Any other members of the board?
Nothing for me.
I have no questions.
I can't see you, Alexandria, so the last voice in the sky, do you have anything?
Do not have anything.
Thank you.
I do not have anything.
Awesome.
Sorry, I've Google muted.
That was me figuratively looking up and down the table. So with that, then, is there, so thank you very much. Is there anybody in the gallery who wishes to be heard on this matter? Seeing and hearing none, Jen, has anything come in?
No.
No comment coming in electronically. So with that.
Can I make motion to close the public comment?
Well, well done. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Steve. Motion made and seconded. I will be doing the, the roll all night. Alexandria.
Will you get any discussion?
Aye.
Of ourselves?
Yeah, that comes after we close the public comment. Then, then we're going to move into the board deliberation. Thank you, thank you, Alexandria. Ellen?
I confirm that we, I've closed, yes.
Thank you. Alan?
Oh, yes.
Thank you. Mr. Fagan?
Yes.
I'm an I, so then we, so that motion passes, and then we move into the board discussion deliberation. And if I'm looking up and down the table, that includes all the voices in the sky, so feel free to chime right in.
You know, Paul, I just have to also say that I'm a fan of applicants coming, you know, listening to the board, listening to the needs of the neighborhood and, and following through.
Agreed. Thank you, Ellen.
I think it'd be a nice improvement.
Agreed. Mr. Frank?
I'm fine with it.
Fine. I think that the board has ended its deliberation, that perhaps there should be a motion. Mr. Clerk?
I make a motion to grant a variance pursuant to the town and North Andover zoning bylaws, section one ninety-five dash six-point-five prohibitions in the GB zoning district for the purpose of allowing refurbishment of the signage at the Hafner site and to continue existing internal illuminations. Specifically, applicant has requested a relief variance for an internally illuminated sign. And I'd like to make mention of the plans that the board has from New Hampshire signs, with the latest revisions being eleven fifteen twenty-one. Actually, there are four sets of drawings, all from New Hampshire signs, and all revised on eleven fifteen twenty-one. They are not numbered per se as to one, two, three, four.
Excellent. And in accordance with the other materials the applicant has submitted, I believe.
Yes.
So there is a motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Ah, he got it in there. Motion made, seconded by Frank, going up the roll. Alexandria.
Aye.
Ellen, Ms. McIntyre.
Aye.
Mr. Kousha?
Yes.
Mr. Fagan?
Yes.
I am an I, so the variance is granted unanimously. Thank you, there he is. Thank you, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, well, we have, we have two, it's a pair. The next item on the agenda is the continued public hearing regarding the, the variances. The applicant has also filed a new public hearing, which is the findings challenging the decision of the building inspector. I think that it makes sense, with the indulgence of the applicant, it makes sense to take the finding first. All right, thank you. So then we will take the fifth item. Mr. Kousha, if you would, read the new public hearing. Do you have it? That's just the agenda.
So it wouldn't exist beyond the agenda, the new public hearing of thirty-four Wentworth Avenue?
Yep. But you probably want the whole thing.
Notice is hereby, whoa, what happened here? Notice is hereby given that the North Andover Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at the North Andover Town Hall at one-twenty Main Street, North Andover, Mass. on Tuesday, December fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one, at seven-thirty PM to all parties interested, interested in petition of Jonathan Grasso for property at thirty-four Wentworth Avenue, map sixty-seven parcel two, North Andover, Mass., oh-one-eight-four-five in the R-four zoning district. The applicant is requesting a finding pursuant to the town and North Andover zoning bylaws, section one ninety-five dash seven-point-eight, exceptions in the R-four zoning district for the purpose of overturning the building inspector's denial dated October fourteenth, two thousand oh-one. Specifically, applicant seeks a finding from town and North Andover zoning bylaws for the application of section one ninety-five dash seven-point-eight, exceptions to the requirements of section one ninety-five dash seven-point-one lot area, section one ninety-five dash seven-point-two street frontage, section one ninety-five dash seven-point-three yards, specifically setbacks. And Table Two, summary of dimensional requirements for the purpose of overturning the building inspector's denial and allowing the construction of a new twenty-three by thirty-five single-family resident on a vacant lot. Application and supporting materials are available for review at the office of the zoning department located at one-twenty Main Street, North Andover, Mass. on Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday from the hours of eight AM to four PM, Tuesday from the hours of eight AM to five-thirty PM, and Friday from the hours of eight o'clock, eight AM to eleven-thirty AM. By order of the Board of Appeals, D. Paul Kock Jr., Esquire.
Thank you, Mr. Kousha.
You're welcome.
Breathless. Can I get that back? So the, what we have tonight, obviously, is that there are two matters on with the agenda. They are, they are discreet, although the subject matter, the, the property subject matter is the same. The, the legal avenue by which this thing proceeds is slightly different. The first find is a finding that's just challenging the building inspector. In order for the applicant to succeed in challenging the vote of the building inspector, he needs a, he, she, he, needs a, a vote of three members, needs three members to say that the building inspector made the wrong decision. And a variance, just by contrast, that everybody knows, which is the next item on the agenda, a variance requires four votes in order to prevail. So with, with that, just want to let everybody know that when we get to public comment, I want everybody to have a say. I want everybody to be heard when we get to that point. It's my expectation that we have a room full of people. We have a room full of people who are extraordinarily interested in this matter, and probably a room full of people who have information. Much like you guys did last time, for those of you who were here, you're extraordinarily respectful of the ask that we made, which was to, to kind of separate your ideas. If there's, somebody has an idea and has spoken about it already in front of you, let's not rehash that idea. The, the compelling arguments that y'all made last time were even made more compelling because they were so clearly separated. We are also going, because we have two matters, there might be some repetition. I'm going to, while the record is clear that something has been said and that the ideas are there, I can appreciate that these are two separate matters on the agenda, and so therefore there may be a need between this matter, and if we get to it, then the variance, that people are going to need to stand up and say the same thing again. And I, I don't like that part of things, but in order to keep the record pure, to keep the record complete, that is certainly something that we are going to need to do. So with those introductory comments, and we'll certainly, I want to get into the matter because we're breathless with anticipation, if the applicant come on up, sit here up at the table, introduce themselves, and let us know what is, what is this recent application all about.
Thank you. And for the record, Stephanie Kiefer, Small Island, on behalf of the applicant, Jonathan Grasso.
Thank you.
I'm Jonathan Grasso.
Thank you.
And so thank you for kind of giving that, that history, and I will try to explain the difference between the continued hearing, that's going to be the next matter, and the reason why we're here on, on this appeal. And this appeal is seeking to challenge the building inspector's denial of a building permit on October fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one. The applicant is here with me this evening, as you've already been introduced, and he had filed his application seeking to allow the construction of a single-family house of the property at thirty-four Wentworth Avenue. Thirty-four Wentworth Avenue is currently an undeveloped parcel, and under current zoning, it's in, it's within the R-four zoning district. The street address is thirty-four Wentworth Avenue, it's map sixty-seven lot zero-zero-two, and the size of the parcel is approximately four thousand five hundred and fourteen square feet, plus or minus. The, the subject of the building permit application was, as I said, a single-family house, modestly sized, twenty-three by thirty-five foot footprint. So the, the footprint would be eight-hundred-and-five square feet, it's two floors, so one thousand six hundred and ten square feet, total size of the structure. It was proposed to be pretty much smack dab in the middle of the lot. It would be setback thirty-point-one feet from the front yard setback, thirty feet from the rear yard setback, and then the side yard setbacks would be twelve-point-two on one side and twelve-point-three feet on the other side. On October fourteenth, the building inspector denied the building permit application, and he stated that the proposed dwelling would require four variances, lot size, lot frontage, and two side yard variances. And we are for the ZBA this evening on the, on the first matter, on the, seeking to appeal the building inspector's determination and to allow for the issuance of the building permit in accordance with the plans that had been presented. As, as the, it is already contention that the property is a grandfather pre-existing non-conforming structure, or non-conforming lot, excuse me. And with my presentation, I'm going to walk the board through kind of the history of the creation of this lot and this, this, the whole neighborhood, basically, as well as the history of the zoning bylaw in North Andover as it relates to this. It's, it's somewhat unique. And so before I jump into that, though, I would like to just introduce to the board the property owner, Mr. LaFrance is here this evening, and he may have something that he wants to say, I'm not certain.
Yeah, well, Laura, on, on the history of the, the property itself, it was, well, she's going to bring it up, it was bought by my grandfather back in, well, when the lots were created, whether nineteen oh-six, I have a, in that area, that one of the, when it was all just fifty by a hundred square lots, you know, fifty by, for the most part. You go to one end of the street, you go the other end of Wentworth Ave, there may be fifty-one by a hundred and, hundred and one. You get down to the other end, where the angles are off, and then the lots became a little smaller, being forty-seven by a hundred. The intent was to have them all fifty by a hundred. And my grandfather passed at a young age, leaving my grandmother by herself with a family of, well, five.
There was eight in total, one, one girl and seven boys.
One girl, seven boys. She, she did it all by herself, with five of them in the military at one time, at one point, my father being one of them, who ended up with the lot, who also died young. I was five at the time, leaving me and my brother, my mother. Nothing they could, she didn't have, she put it in a trust for us, for down the road, and here we sit. It could tie it up on the trust with my mother in a nursing home, and they, they needed to sell, they, they needed it at a certain value, otherwise it was, we had to pay the difference and all the rest of that. Now, she's passed, and we're trying to get through the, what my grandfather's wishes were, was to, you know, leave it for the children to live in somewhere, you know? So that's where we're at.
Thank you. Nice, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. With that being said, as Mr. LaFrance referenced, that the, the lot itself was created back by a, a plan that was created in March nineteen oh-six and has been recorded at the Essex North Registry of Deeds since May nineteen oh-six. It's recorded in book two-thirty, page six-hundred, and that was the Highland View Park Plan. And that plan, it, it should be submitted in your package here, but if you haven't seen it, it's this plan. And, yeah, it basically created a hundred and eighty-four very small lots, and so you lots, and so you have, I think Chadwick Street, you have on the north side, you have Ferber Ave. on the south, and kind of the intersecting streets, Prospect, Highland View, Brightwood, Wentworth, and you have just a series of, of small lots that it laid out. And as Mr. LaFrance had said, that they were all small lots, and actually, if you look at the plan that's in your materials, I, I would say probably the majority of them did not have fifty feet of frontage.
Can I interrupt you, but what I just heard was, he said the lots were fifty by one hundred, and these are not fifty by one hundred. So I'm not sure how we got from fif, I'm not sure how we got from where the hundred and fif, the hundred slash fifty down to this size.
Sure, so if, let me just do a quick explanation. So this, this plan here, yeah, so it has, it, it shows, like, so over the years from nineteen oh six to twenty twenty-one, some of the lots have been combined, but the original lots is laid out, it's in that plan that's in your package that looks like this.
Well, I'm just, I'm going, I just, what, correct, just clarify what I was just told. If, if what the gentleman said is not accurate, he said a hundred by fifty.
Right, and some of them are, and, and a lot of them are maybe forty-seven by eighty-seven. If, if you look at the plan in your package, you'll see it has the, it shows on each of the lots, the frontage as well as the lot depth, and then the, the square footage. So you, you get some that are down as low as three thousand eight hundred and twenty-five square feet under this nineteen oh six plan.
One second. I have your, what number lot are we talking about?
We are talking, thirty-four Wentworth is lot number one hundred and ten.
Lot number one-ten?
Mm-hmm, so it's kind of in the center of Wentworth Ave., slightly to the right, if you're looking at that plan.
Yep.
Okay. And just for a frame of reference, the adjacent, or the abutting lot, lot number one-eleven, that has a, an address of thirty Wentworth Avenue. That lot is, is presently developed, and there's a single-family house on that lot. It is slightly smaller than thirty-four Wentworth Avenue. And actually, on the side yard setback of that is, it's even less than twelve feet. So as I'll, I'll explain in a moment, the zoning bylaw has special provisions for pre-nineteen fifty-seven lots, and it talks about there being a twelve-foot side yard setback. So the already developed lot at thirty Wentworth Avenue doesn't have that. So it, it's basically the same size as thirty-four Wentworth, slightly smaller, but it doesn't adhere to that. But again, for present purposes, we're talking lot one, lot one-ten, thirty-four Wentworth Avenue. And I, and Mr. Sadi, I would draw your attention again to that nineteen oh six plan to, to get better information in terms of the, when it, when those lots were laid out, the frontage and the depth. So some, some of them did get to fifty and one hundred, but I would say the majority of them actually did not. Kind of the deeper lots, if you will, were on the, the, the north and south boundaries. So what was it, Chadwick Street to the north, and then Ferber Ave. to the south. So kind of the lots coming off of those two streets may be a little bit deeper and may have gotten closer to the five thousand square foot size, but the ones primarily on Wentworth, Highland, Bright, Brightwood, right, or Bri, yeah, Brightwood Avenue, those all tended to have been laid out as under five thousand square feet, meaning less than fifty feet of frontage and less than one hundred feet of depth. And so, again, the, the Highland View Park Plan has been of record since nineteen oh six, May of nineteen oh six is when it was recorded at the Essex North Registry of Deeds. The LaFrance family actually acquired the property, and the deed to that should be in the package of materials in nineteen eighteen. And as Mr. LaFrance just testified to, it, it has been within his family since nineteen eighteen, so over a century. And at no time has the LaFrance family ever owned any property on either side, so it's always been a single lot in ownership, never in common ownership with any other abutting And again, so consistent with kind of the typical layout of this nineteen oh six plan, the, the property that we're looking at, thirty-four Wentworth, lot one-ten on that plan, has forty-seven point five feet of frontage on Wentworth Avenue, and then it extends back somewhere between ninety-five and ninety-six feet in depth. One, one side is ninety-five and change, the other side's ninety-six and change, and the, the total area is four thousand five hundred and forty-seven square feet. And as I said, the, the neighborhood itself was somewhat based on this nineteen oh six plan, and over the course of the years, certain properties were able to double their lot size, and, and some even were able to get three lots. But I would just point out that this whole neighborhood is, is, it's a modestly sized lot neighborhood, and I would say the vast majority are undersized of what the current R four zoning requirements would be, which is twelve thousand five hundred. You have many on here that are, I, I think I've identified that there are twelve developed properties within the neighborhood that have insufficient frontage and, have less than fifty feet of frontage and less than one hundred feet of width, so, and of those, eight are under five thousand square feet. There are a couple that were able to get the back lot, so they have like, you know, say forty-seven feet of frontage, but they got the back lot, so they got themselves to five thousand. But nonetheless, the, the vast majority of this entire neighborhood does not adhere to the twelve thousand five hundred, because if, if, if a family were able to acquire a double lot, it only put them in the range of, say, ninety-five hundred to ten thousand square feet per lot. So this is not a large lot neighborhood typically, and there are several examples of this. At, at this point, what I'm going to do is I'm going to have Jonathan walk you through both what he had proposed for his, for the house plan on the lot, as, as well as just to kind of walk you through what I was saying, that this is a neighborhood that has a lot of undersized lots. So Jonathan, if you could.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, so what we were trying to build, what our, what our vision is, and it's in the, your set of documents that we submitted, the house plans, it's a traditional colonial house, and it's going to be consistent with the, the look and feel of the neighborhood right now and proportion of the neighborhood as well. Like I said, there's, like Stephanie explained, there are a mix of different sized lots, but vastly, you know, most of them are narrow or close to being undersized or have limited frontage in the whole neighborhood. So we're not really deviating from the, the fabric of the, the whole neighborhood in our plans for construction. Again, next door, just to reiterate, there's a house that's, that's existing there right now on, on the exact same size lot as, as our property that we're trying to build on. So that's, that's, that's what we're trying to do for the house, but, the house construction, but just to speak a little bit more of the, the neighborhood, this is a, a layout of the Highland Park development, and this just shows you, I don't know if you can see that well from where you are, you know, each little rectangle was a lot, roughly fifty by a hundred or slightly less. And I circled and read all the lots that are, that exist right now as pre-existing non-conforming, whether it's because they have insufficient frontage or they have insufficient area. So there are twelve of those lots, and eight of those, who'd you say, Stephanie?
Eight of those.
Eight of them have under five thousand square feet. And there's also, I think there are only three lots remaining, including what, our subject property, that, that are not built on, but I'm, I'm assuming ours is the only one that's been in common ownership, the family not owned other, you know, adjacent properties too. And I'll also point out, you know, these two lots, they're about the same size, but they have exactly fifty feet of frontage, but they're, they have houses built upon them. Just kind of gives you an idea of what the neighborhood looks like and how, what, what our plans are for thirty-four Wentworth Ave., wouldn't really be a deviation of the, the field in there.
So if I could now kind of walk the board through kind of how the zoning kind of developed in North Andover and, and how it relates specifically to thirty-four Wentworth Avenue. So under current zoning, in the R four district, in accordance with table two, the, the general requirements would be twelve thousand five hundred square feet of lot area, a hundred feet of frontage, side yards of fifteen feet, and your front and rear yards of thirty feet. However, under the current bylaw, section seven-eight sets out special requirements for pre-nineteen fifty-seven lots, and under that language, it states residential lot areas and frontages, frontages above required and listed in table two shall not apply in residence district to any lot of less area or less frontage than the above required, if such lot was not adjoined by other land of the same owner available for combination with or used in combination with such lot, provided that the applicant for a building permit on any such lot shall show by citations from the Essex County Registry of Deeds incorporated in or attached to such application, that such lot was lawfully laid out and duly recorded by plan or deed prior to January nine, nineteen fifty-seven, and provided that such lot, that that on such a lot, there shall be kept open and not built upon a front and a rear yard, each not less than twenty feet deep, and two side yards, each not less than twelve feet wide, and further provided that such, that such lot shall have a minimum street frontage of fifty feet and a minimum lot area of five thousand square feet. So I will take a pause there and just kind of hit the high points of the building permit application, but then also I'm going to walk the board back to the history of the bylaw and that exemption for pre-nineteen fifty-seven lots. So I know I'm doing a lot of talking, but if you just bear with me, I'll get you to where I'm going. So the first requirement, kind of of the exemption that's currently found in section seven point eight, that the lot was lawfully laid out and duly recorded by a plan or deed prior to January nine, nineteen fifty-seven. So we've established that. We have a nineteen oh six plan that was duly recorded at Essex North in May of nineteen oh six. We have LaFrance's deed from, I forget the month, but nineteen eighteen, that, that also was provided. So the next kind of, what else falls into this exemption here, that there shall not be built upon a front yard or a rear yard and not less than twenty feet deep. Here, too, Mr. Grasso's plan has a thirty-point-one foot front yard and a thirty-foot rear yard. So check, we've hit that box. The next step, the two side yards are not less than twelve feet wide. Again, we have twelve-point-one feet on one, or twelve-point-two feet on one side, and I believe twelve-point-three feet on the other side. So it adheres to that. And then the last require, or the, the last provision within the current section seven point eight is that you have a minimum street frontage of fifty feet and a minimum lot area of five thousand square feet. And on that note, we pointed out to the building inspector that you need to look at this property and you need to look at the, the prior versions of the zoning bylaw, because it's our contention that the property met the then-re requirements and therefore is grandfathered. So zoning first came about in, in North Andover in nineteen fifty, I think it was voted at town meeting in nineteen fifty-six. And in nineteen fifty-six, the zoning bylaw had an express provision, and I, we provided copies of the prior zoning bylaw provisions within our request to the building inspector, that under section six point six-one of that nineteen fifty-six zoning bylaw, lots that were laid out and duly recorded by plan or deed prior to the effective date were exempt from the, from the dimensional requirements. So we have a lot that was created in nineteen oh six, it's been in the LaFrance family since nineteen eighteen, and it adhered to that nineteen fifty-six bylaw. Nineteen sixty-six, North Andover has an amendment to the zoning bylaw, and it carries forward that section six point six-one exemption for pre-nineteen fifty-seven lots, but then it starts to talk about that it has to have minimum setbacks for the side yard of twelve feet and twenty feet front and rear yard setbacks. So again, the, the property still complies with this, and so, but we see what's happened here, right? So nineteen fifty-six has happened, and it carried through on the amendments of nineteen sixty-six. There are two sets of requirements that North Andover sets forward. It's pre-nineteen fifty-seven lots and then non-pre, you know, not pre-nineteen fifty-seven lots. Nineteen seventy-two, North Andover again amended zoning bylaw. At this time, it kind of like redefined the zoning district. So up until the nineteen seventy-two amendment, from what I can tell, this area was rural residential. So nineteen seventy-two, North Andover then creates the R one through R four residential zoning districts, and the property is R four where it remains today. And what it does then is it continues having that exemption for pre-nineteen fifty-seven lots, it re-numbers it from section six point six-one to section six point eight, but it still provides that if, if you have a pre-nineteen fifty-seven lot, you have certain requirements. If you have, if you don't have a pre-nineteen fifty-seven, you have table two. And then the, the last kind of thing in my, in my history of North Andover zoning is the nineteen seventy-four amendments. Nineteen seventy-four, another amendment, but it's, it's at that amendment that we see that the, the local bylaw sought to impose a, a frontage minimum of fifty feet for pre-nineteen fifty-seven lots and a lot area of five thousand square feet for pre-nineteen fifty-seven lots, again in keeping with the twelve-foot setbacks for its side yards, twenty-foot rear and front yards. At, at time, though, of the nineteen seventy-four amendment, or up until that time, thirty-four Wentworth had fully complied with the, the zoning bylaw provisions for pre-nineteen fifty-seven lots. And what we have said in, in, to the building inspector is that it met the requirements then in place, and it should be grandfathered prior to those, it was compliant with zoning up until nineteen seventy-four, when the zoning bylaw sought to include additional things, additional provisions relative to frontage and lot size. And our, our argument is that we're grandfathered to, under that pre-nineteen seventy-four bylaw provisions, and the, sorry, I lost my, my place on my thing, that the, the characterization of pre-nineteen fifty-seven lots and post-nineteen fifty-seven lots, those are requirements, those aren't exceptions or exemptions, that the building inspector should have applied what is now found at section seven point eight, but what had then been what we're saying applicable to us would have been section six point eight of the, of the prior zoning bylaw. And then this is somewhere where we then bleed into the next hearing, if you, if you will, but our, our argument is if, if the, if the board does not consider that the building inspector erred in, in our position, erred in disagreeing with our position that the property was grandfathered from those nineteen seventy-four, that added the five thousand minimum lot area and fifty feet of frontage, then at a minimum, the building inspector erred in that he didn't apply the sections of, section seven point eight, which says that for pre-nineteen fifty-seven lots, you only need twelve feet of side yard setbacks, and you only need twenty feet of front and rear. And the proposal has thirty feet at least, front and rear, and it has more than twelve feet on the side yards. So if the board does not accept the contention that the building inspector erred, that we should have been, that we are grandfathered, because we, we adhered to the requirements of the zoning bylaw prior to the change that made us non-conforming, the building inspector at least erred in requ, in, in making the assertion that we required four different types of variances from side yards as well as frontage and lot area. And so I don't know if this is a good point for me to- And so, I don't know if this is a good point for me to pause because it then gets into the other part of it, so, and I have spoken a lot right now.
Thank, thank you for the, the presentation, walking, walking us through that. And thank you for recognizing that it may be, maybe worth taking a, a break and getting another, another voice or another question concerned. I'm not going to start. I'll ask the board. Board, any questions right now for the applicant? That includes the voices in the sky, please. Anybody just chime right in?
Yes. One of the questions I have. You're on Lot one ten, correct?
Yeah.
In Lot one eleven, there's, which is thirty Wentworth Avenue?
That's correct.
There's a, a house there currently?
Correct.
And how about on one twelve or one oh nine? Any houses there?
There is one house on, those two lots have been joined and there's one house on that lot.
On one oh eight, one oh nine is now a single lot.
Okay, one oh eight, one oh nine is, those lots have been joined?
Correct.
That's correct.
Okay. And how about on the other side, one twelve, one thirteen?
Joined as well.
And they've been joined as well?
Yes.
Let me ask you a question.
Sure.
Across the street from here, immediately, immediately across the street, which would be Lot one twenty-six, in that area?
Yes.
Are there any houses on any of those particular lots?
One twenty-eight, one twenty-seven, one twenty-six is one lot.
One twenty, say it again?
Lots, one twenty-six, one twenty-seven, one twenty-eight, they have been joined.
Okay. So, with the exception of Lot one eleven, there were no other houses that have been built on that size lot?
Correct.
Okay.
On, on Wentworth Avenue?
On Wentworth.
Yeah, yeah, on Wentworth Avenue, right.
Correct.
Okay.
You can see there's one, there is one on Prospect Street, which is the one, you know, page up and page down, you have, you have a
Yeah, my concern is in the immediate area.
Understood.
Not, not on the next street.
And also, just for clarity's sake, at the lot, the house on Lot one eleven, we've looked and there does not appear to have been any, any relief that was issued from the board.
So, basically what you're saying then, after your long speech, which I tried to stay awake, is, okay, as long as it meets twelve-foot setbacks, side setbacks, and twenty feet front and rear, this is a legally grandfathered lot. With the exception of you lacking the proper area, area for, for, for a building lot.
Yes, and, and that our position is, is too. First, that because the lot complied with the then existing requirements prior to the change that made it not comply, it's a legally grandfathered lot. And so, we should be permitted to advance. And then the, kind of the alternative argument to that, as I tried to explain, is that if the board disagrees with that assertion and looks at to whether or not a variance is required, then the, the variances of a lot in the R four under Table two is not the correct route. One would have to look at Section seven point eight and see where it didn't adhere to those requirements. And, and as you stated, that would simply be frontage and lot area. And in that regard, it's a difference of two and a half feet of frontage and four hundred and fifty-three square feet of lot area.
So, what you're saying then, if I understand this correctly, because it's a grandfathered lot, because of the plan filed in nineteen oh eight or whatever the, the number is, okay? Is that we have to, being the town, being the building department, have to agree because of the twelve-foot setbacks and the twenty-foot, uh, front and back setbacks? This is a legal lot, is what you're saying?
What we're saying is that the lot had complied.
It, it complied with the current zone, with the zoning that should be applicable to it.
Yes.
Okay.
And with that, too, what we've, what we've, our plan, we're still in compliance with Table two as far as frontage and rear. Just, just to show that we're trying to, you know, do our part to be in most
To minimize kind of the, to make the property, or to make the house as appropriate to the scale as possible, Jonathan went back and said, okay, well, let me, let me like, you know, really bring it in as much as possible. So, the front and the rear yards, even, even though it would only be twenty feet, he's made it thirty feet on either end, which is consistent with if you had like a new lot today and you were going under that, so.
Let me say this. Driving down the street and seeing where that house would be located, in my opinion, it certainly would look a little out of character with the neighborhood. That's all. Even though the house next door to the left of it, right, correct, is on the same size lot.
So, I drove, I drove there myself. And to start with, I was looking for the address. There's no address posted, at least if it's posted somewhere, I don't know where it is. So, I stopped and I talked to a neighbor and I said, who had a close address, and I said, where is this place? Okay. And he goes, because I, I did not think that, that lot was where you would build a house. I thought that was just a part of the yard of the other houses. Okay, so, I'm just saying that as I look across the street where John just said that the three lots, there's a large house directly across the street where three lots are now merged together and a, and a larger house is there. And, okay, so I looked at that neighborhood and I see, I, it's pretty clear to me that, that lots have been consolidated and houses are bigger. So, I'm just sharing my observations. When I, when I looked at it, I go, wow, this is, this is pretty crazy. I don't, you know, so I'm gonna leave it at that for now.
No, I appreciate that. Perhaps a part of your perspective may have been because the house adjacent to it was kind of encroaching on its side yard. So, I, I think that, you know, if, if it had been like, but you're right. If it had been like flagged out and you could have seen exactly where the borders were, you know, you may have had a different kind of perspective when you were looking at it.
As a, as a citizen of this town and someone who is invested and sincerely wants the town to be the best it can be, as I look at the neighborhood, I, I just say to myself, does this add value here? Or does this detract from value? And, and that's the judgment that I go through in, as I vote and as we go through things. It's like, is this helping North Andover or is this hurting North Andover? So, I'm not making a state, a judgment, I'm just telling you how I process this.
Mrs. Kiefer, I have one other thing I'd like to say. You have represented the applicant, and you are presenting his way of us to look at this, correct? Okay, I've been in front of many boards, conservation, whatever, in my lifetime. What if we were to ask our town council what his opinion is with your interpretation of the laws? Would you mind that?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, you think we could get a legal opinion from town council? Ask her if her interpretation is correct or not?
Uh, I'm, I'm sure that we could if that would come for you, however. The, the board is charged with making the determination. It's not necessarily always a legal opinion that the board, you know, you know, necessarily follows, I guess. So, the answer is, yeah, we could absolutely ask Suzanne.
Yeah, because what we're arguing right now is her interpretation of the law and maybe somebody else's interpretation of the law.
Well, we have, we, we can read them, I guess. This is perhaps the segue. So, the building inspector has written, written a letter in defense of his decision because he is out of the continental United States right now, unfortunately. Otherwise, he would, he would be here to discuss the matter with us. So, read aloud, "His December fourteen twenty twenty-one Ray thirty-four Wentworth Avenue, zoning board of appeals. The building permit for thirty-four Wentworth Avenue was denied due to Town of North Andover zoning bylaws, Section one ninety-five dash seven point eight exemptions, Section one ninety-five dash seven point one lot area, Section one ninety-five dash seven point two street frontage, and Section one ninety-five dash seven point three yard setbacks. Applicant is requesting a lot area needing a relief variance of seven thousand nine hundred fifty-three square feet. The lot area proposed is four thousand five hundred forty-seven square feet, and the lot area required per Table two is twelve thousand five hundred. Applicant is requesting a variance pursuant to Town of North Andover zoning bylaws, Section one ninety-five seven point two street frontage, Table two summary of dimensional requirements for street frontage in the R four zoning district. Street frontage needing a relief variance of fifty-two and a half feet. The street frontage proposed is forty-seven and a half. Street frontage required per Table two is one hundred feet. The applicant is requesting a variance pursuant to Town of North Andover zoning bylaws, Section one ninety-five to seven point three yard setbacks, Table two summary of dimensional requirements for one side setback in the R four zoning district, requested a left side setback needing a relief variance of two point eight feet. The left side setback proposed is twelve point two feet, and the side setback required for Table two is fifteen feet. The applicant is requesting a variance pursuant to Town of North Andover zoning bylaws, Section one ninety-five to seven point three yard setbacks, Table two summary of dimensional requirements for one side setback in the R four zoning district for the, for the seat, has requested a right side setback needing a relief variance of two point seven feet. The right side setback proposed is twelve point three, and side setback required for Table two is fifteen feet. Lastly, the applicant is requesting a finding by the board for an exemption under Town of North Andover zoning bylaws, Section one ninety-five to seven point eight exemptions. The lot does not qualify for an exemption per Massachusetts zoning RE sixteen RC thirteen. Zoning and building codes approved on August seventh, two thousand thirteen." Then it gets into the argument, one zoning. MGL, Chapter forty-eight, the zoning act widely referenced as merely forty-eight. Enabling law allows local communities to create zoning bylaws and ordinance under their police powers. Includes procedures for special permits, variances, appeals, and public notification. Pre-existing, uh, five, pre-existing non-conforming use, MGL forty-eight, Section six. Zoning is not retroactive. Building lots, structures, and uses pre-existing zoning may be grandfathered and not subject to new and more restrictive zoning. If zoning changed to more restrictive, property deemed a pre-existing non-conforming use and lot, building or special permit is grandfathered. See, grandfathered status may apply to reconstruction of a structure or different or expanded use of property. Forty-eight specifically grandfathers any lot for single and two-family residential use of minimum area of five thousand square feet and fifty feet frontage not held in common ownership with adjacent land. Therefore, I do not believe that this law qualifies for an exemption, and I ask the board not to overturn my denial of their building permit. Thank you. Paul Hutchins, Building Commissioner, Inspector of Buildings, Town of North Andover. So, that is not Ms. Egan's, that's not town council's opinion, but it is, it is the
That's the building inspector.
The building inspectors, correct.
Mrs. Kiefer, what's your response to this letter?
So, my response would be, well, a couple of responses. And I'm sorry, I haven't received a copy of that letter, so I wasn't able to review it before this evening. It, it appears, however
Do you have one? Do you have an extra?
They give us this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You should give us some time to review the paper, right?
I hope you appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. So, with response, in, in response to Mr. Hutchins' statements as to the nature of what he feels the variance relief would be, so seven thousand nine hundred and fifty square, fifty-three square feet of lot area, forty-seven point five feet of street frontage, and then the, the two side yard setbacks. Again, I, I think as I kind of indicated in my presentation, my position is that is based on a, a misinterpretation and because that's applying the Table two standards. And your zoning bylaw is set out specifically that there are one set of requirements for pre nineteen fifty-seven lots, and there are requirements set out in Table two for other lots. And so, it's been established that this lot predated nineteen fifty-seven. And so, to apply the twelve thousand five hundred square feet of lot area, the hundred feet of frontage, and the fifteen feet for the side yards would be a misreading, I, I believe, because that's, that's applying the standards of Table two and not applying the standards of one ninety-five, um, seven point eight. Further in his letter, he, he then goes at the beginning, at the end of the first page and then on to the second page, he, he starts referencing pre-existing non-conforming and going under forty-eight, Section six. And, and states that building lots, structures, and uses may be grandfathered and not subject to new or more restrictive zoning. And I would agree with that, and that's, that's my contention, actually, is that the pre nineteen seventy-four zoning bylaw, does, does property adhere to that? And so, therefore, it's grandfathered and the, and the building inspector should have applied that and for requesting the board to overturn the building inspector to have that be applied. From there, he, he goes on to set out some other things. But then he, he points to, he's highlighted it in his letter, Point D, that forty-eight, Section six provides that grandfathered lots for single and two-family residential use have a minimum of five thousand square feet and fifty feet of frontage that are not otherwise in common ownership with adjacent land. And that is true, that forty-eight, Section six does state that. However, the case law has recognized that forty-eight, Section six provides the minimum protections and that a municipality can provide broader protections. And if we look at the history of the North Andor zoning, North Andover zoning bylaw, that's exactly what they did. In nineteen fifty-six, when they first wrote it, they created the broad exemption for pre nineteen fifty-seven lots because I'm imagining that there are probably a number of other neighborhoods in the community that were developed, just like Highland View Park. You know, somebody bought the property, plotted it out, and didn't have five thousand square foot lots, didn't have fifty feet of frontage. And, and the town, when they were adopting zoning, recognized that it was potentially going to like really hurt a number of people. So, while forty-eight, Section six does say that, as I said, the case law also recognizes that the state act, it provides the bare minimum protection and that municipalities were available, were free to provide broader protections, and that's what North Andover did. And that's why I went through kind of that excruciating history of North Andover's changes through the years to show that it intended. Because when North Andover adopted its zoning, forty-eight, Section six existed. It could have, it could have imposed that, but it didn't. The town specifically chose not to impose that five thousand square feet and fifty feet of frontage. And so, I, I, to answer your question, to respond, to my response to his is, I think I walked through the first part of the letter that he, that our contention is that seven point eight sets a different set of requirements or what had previously been Section six point six one, six point eight, and now it's seven point eight.
So, in a long story short, with all, all the numbers being tossed at me, because it was a legal lot back in nineteen hundreds, that lot should have the same exemption on the same property rights today, correct?
It should be grandfathered.
Right, it should be grandfathered, because the lot was made back then.
That's correct.
And all the zoning laws have
And it complied with, when zoning wasn't active, it complied with the requirements.
I wonder if any of the other board members have, uh, their two cents they want to put in here.
I guess I'm not sure why the nineteen seventy-four zoning change. You talked through all the other zoning changes and that it still complied up until nineteen seventy-four. So, how come you don't see the nineteen seventy-four change as, you know, having an impact?
As I explained, that is, that's, up until that time, that's when our grandfather protection kicks in because it was an already existing lot in sole owner, or not in common ownership with the budding properties that had complied with zoning. And so, when there was a change that made it non-compliant, it's grandfathered.
Oh, so prior to that, it didn't need to be grandfathered, is what you're saying?
Correct.
And then once they made that change, that's when you say it became grandfathered?
Yes.
That's, I guess that's, what Alan said, I, I'd sort of like to have town council's
So, the building inspector
Opinion on that as well.
Yeah, I didn't mean to interrupt. That's right. So, the, the point that we're, we're kind of skipping at, I'd love to hear what the applicant has
what the applicant has to say. The building inspector, you know, there, there are four points in here, A, B, C, and D. Um, you certainly highlighted D and you've addressed others, but C, um, tell us, are there limits to pre-existing non-conforming? Uh, and, and this, this note in the building inspector's letter that said grandfathered status may apply to reconstruction of a structure or a different or expanded use. We're not talking about an expanded use or a different use here, we're talking about putting a structure on the lot. So the building inspector suggesting that you can grandfather, but only for the reconstruction of a structure. That's what it sounds like from this letter anyway.
And my argument to that would be, if I was a lawyer, A and B, uh, contradicts that. You want, you want to take paragraph C, how about A and B?
Further, I, I-
And, and once again, I think this is over my head, maybe the other people there are more comfortable. I would feel more comfortable, you're saying you're part of the story and you're being paid to say you're part of the story. I would like to get an opinion from town council before I say anything as to, you know, is it red, is it black, is it Hershey's or is it Nestle's? I just want to make sure that the town isn't put in a dangerous situation here, because the way I see this, we're opening up a Pandora's box that all of these lots and all of these structures could affect the zoning for the entire town, correct? Anything with a registered plan going back to 1900, could make the same argument that you're making.
But it would have to be in common ownership, right?
Or not in common ownership.
I mean, not in common ownership with an adjacent property.
Right.
Oh, 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 okay, yes.
Yeah, and it was the same owners ever since 1918.
I understand where you're coming from, yes, yes, right.
So, so there's, there's a, there has to be a, a very limited amount of lots that would ever be subject to this type of situation.
Yeah, but the ownership has never changed, that your exemption should apply.
Correct, that's a big piece of it.
That's the way I'm seeing this.
And the, the same family has owned it ever since day one.
I understand, I understand. I just feel uncomfortable, I, I would like a, a legal opinion of this, that's all. But that's my opinion, other people have other opinions.
Anything, voices in the sky? Any thoughts?
Um, I actually recuse from this one.
All right.
I don't know if you recall that.
Thank you, Alexandria. How about the other voices in the sky, Ron or Ellen, any thoughts, any questions?
It's a lot of information, a lot of, um, a lot of time. Um, no, I'm, I'm all set, thank you.
Yeah, and I, I guess I say I don't have any questions. Um, I have a lot of confusion, but I have, I don't have any questions. Um, you know-
I agree with that.
Given that, that I think, you know, this piece is whether we, you know, vote to overturn the building inspector's, uh, conclusions, um, I, I thought the building inspector kind of laid out pretty well why he decided what he decided and it does look like it is in agreement with Massachusetts law and 1974 zoning. And I guess that's why things come to the zoning board, is when the zoning, when the building inspector denies, you know, says this is not conforming, then they have to go for the variance. But I'm not seeing a compelling reason to overturn his decision.
Well, I think in the building inspector's letter, it says, it says right there in item D, he, uh, item D lowers his standards, basically. He, he, he kind of puts it out there that he's, we're not being compared to table two. We've been compared to a lesser threshold of 5,000 square feet, 50 feet of frontage. But along with that, which is not included in the letter, would be the side setbacks, the rear setbacks, am I-
Right, well, I, I, I think that, um, Jonathan's correct that by, by implication of referring to 48, section six, um, Mr. Hutchins implicitly is also acknowledging that maybe the 195, 7.8 exemption for pre-1957 lots should have been given consideration. Um, but the first part of his letter, it appears to me to override that and just apply the standards of table two. Um, and, and so it's, it's, it is a little bit challenging for the board, because if you don't agree with my position that this, this lot is grandfathered, I think you still need to make the determination whether or not the dimensional requirements of 195, 7.8 as they exist today, if, if that's what you decide, apply, because then the first part of Paul's letter doesn't make sense, because he's applying the table two standards as opposed to the, um, 50 feet of frontage, 5,000 square feet, 20 feet front and rear and tw-12 feet side yards, so, um-
Understood, and I think, and I think I would share the board's confusion, uh, the, perhaps the gallery's confusion, uh, on all of this and the confusion in the, the letter and the presentation, because we have an, I think, an extraordinarily confusing fact pattern, extraordinarily confusing legal pattern, and we have an applicant arguing in the alternative, and perhaps Paul Hutchins is also arguing in the alternative. So we have four arguments kind of going at one, at this, at this morass of information. Um, and myself, uh, sit here, uh, saying that there has to be a limit to grandfathering. I don't know what that limit is frankly, but there has to be a limit, just because you have a lot that was, that was recorded in 1906 does not mean to me, um, and I'm certainly happy to be proven wrong, whether it's Superior Court, Land Court, Supreme Court, I'm not, I don't care, um, but I am happy to be proven, or told that I am wrong, when just because you've recorded something in 1906 does not mean that all bets are off and you can do whatever you want in 2021. With that being said, we have some direction in the code. We have 7.8, which, which addresses, which the applicant has acknowledged, which Mr. Hutchins has acknowledged, uh, which offers some direction on, to me, it offers some direction very clearly on this lot. Um, and the, uh, Ms. Kiefer read, read it aloud and there's a lot of things that we can check off in here. We can check off the side setbacks, we can check off the, the front rear setbacks, you know, awesome, awesome, awesome. Uh, but then we get into the very troublesome stuff at the very end, um, which the applicant has certainly acknowledged, and I'm just going to re-highlight, which is that even if you can, can grandfather or use the, the exceptions in 7.8 and say, yes, we qualify because we meet the side and, and the two side setbacks, we meet the front rear setback, we still have trouble with the frontage and the minimum lot area. And that is just crystal clear, the applicant has, has put it in its, uh, has put it in its presentation, they are written down in the plans, we're short in frontage and we are short in lot area. If we are short in frontage and we are short in lot area, then the building inspector just cannot issue a building permit. It's like, to me, it's just that simple. The building, the building inspector says, I can't give you a building permit, go, 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 uh, you know, apply for a variance if you want to pursue the project. So, and that's where the, the first application, which we are going to be taking second tonight if we get there, um, which seems to me to be the appropriate path. 7.8 addresses, it seems like 7.8 was drafted for this lot. It wasn't, I'm just being kind of dramatic, it's tailor-made for the application here on Wentworth. Um, it's just troublesome that we don't have frontage of 50 feet, we do not have lot area of 5,000 square feet, we are short on both, so as a technical matter, we just, it's just not accepted via 7.8, so we should, in my, in my view, we should proceed directly to, you know, the variance applications. As Alan, Alan noted earlier, other board members can, can certainly think differently, rational people can disagree even on, you know, what, what may be clear to one or another. So I don't, I'm not, I, I don't sit here necessarily needing, I, I would, I would certainly benefit from an opinion from town council, but I'm looking at the language that's in front of me, and the language in front of me is 7.8, which says, we need frontage, we need lot area, we don't have those, the building inspector denied, we may not necessarily like the reasons, the whys and wherefore's for the denial, but at the end of the day, in my estimation, the building inspector was spot on, there, there is a denial in store for an application that doesn't meet frontage and doesn't meet lot area. That's, that's just where I come from.
So my argument is, what do we have to lose by getting a, an opinion from town council?
Understood.
What do we have to lose? Trying to do, trying to do the right thing, okay? Because her, because she on page three in, on B, lot end of zoning law dates back to 1956 and has constantly protected pre-existing non-conforming lots such as the 34 one with the avenue.
And the pre-existing non-conforming lots are, are addressed.
So this is where I have, let town council, okay, that's what he gets paid for, let him make a ruling and upon his recommendation, be it A or B, the way I'm gonna go. Okay, you people don't, you, you, without town council, you don't do without town council.
So the other question I would have about that is, on the, uh, the lot area variance, um, you know, it says he needs 7,953 square feet of relief, if you use today's standard.
Right, so would, would that be 453 square feet? I mean, that's a- Right, so once, once again, the applicant argued either, either grandfather or let's look at 7.8, that's why I think what Mr. Hutchins is seeking to do in this, let's talk about table two or 7.8 or section six, which is kind of codified in 7.8.
So that would have to be changed depending on which way.
So you people are forgetting, right next door, right next door to this particular lot, because that house that's already built on the same size lot.
And if that application were before us, then we would evaluate it. Unfortunately, there is no precedential weight to a structure that's already been built.
Once again, my vote is for town council to put a ruling on it. Can I make that a motion?
Would we make a, a motion to get the opinion of town council?
Yes.
Let's just use the right pronouns, it's a she, her name is Suzanne Egan.
Excuse me, okay.
Um, I think that you can certainly, certainly make that motion.
I would like to make a motion that we get the opinion of town council, give her the information that, uh, Ms., Mrs. Kiefer has provided us and, uh, have her give us some guidance as to how we should rule, rule on this.
Thank you, Mr. Kousha. Well, is, there's, it's, uh, so what I'm going to do is ask for a second, that doesn't show that we were going to proceed. If we get, if we get a second, then the board can deliberate on the motion. So is there a second to Mr. Kousha's motion?
Second.
Frank gives, gives a second, I will go, uh, uh, let's have some discussion. Now that there is actually a motion that's made and seconded, we can have some discussion. Uh, any thoughts?
Once again, what do we have to lose by getting her opinion?
Understood, I mean, your, your position is clear. Uh, is there, any, any thoughts, Ms. Steve?
Yeah, so I do need some, I'll say, some guidance in terms of going back to 1906. Okay, bringing that in, in, in this grandfathering, where does the year 2021, almost '22, in terms of the evolution of this town, how does that apply today? That's where I need help, because I am not in favor of, of putting a structure into that neighborhood that, that I'm gonna say may not fit. And so I, I, and, and in order, and in order to, to, uh, support that, my feelings there, I need to make sure that indeed that, uh, we have the ability to say no for such a structure. So I, uh, so all of the history here, I, I don't, I need validation. I, I understand what the history is, I, I mean, it's, it's been laid out, but how does it apply to us in, in our roles in this town today? And, and so I, uh, that's the clarity I need on this one.
Thank you, Steve. Uh, Frank, you said-
I think I already said-
Good idea.
Yeah. Yeah, question, questions for the chair, though, if, if a vote for getting input from town council, is that not really a move for a continuance, so we can get the input of town council?
Well, we would certainly be asking the indulgence of the applicant, if a time waiver has not been signed, then we would ask the applicant to do so. And if the applicant were not willing to sign a time waiver, then in spite of the motion, we would need to have a vote tonight, or the application would succeed.
Okay.
And, how about, uh, hey, hey, Ron, any thoughts on the, the motion itself, on, uh, seeking the guidance of town council?
Well, I, I think this is, um, particularly muddy enough that I would have to agree with Mr. Kousha, that it, it, it does us no harm, if, you know, calendar permitting, it may do us great benefit to get that. So I would say that that may be a prudent course of action.
Thank you, Ron. Uh, Ms. McIntyre, any thoughts?
So, so my thoughts are, I actually agree with Alan on this point, but I don't agree with Alan that the history of zoning that was presented, I thought that was extremely interesting. So I, so I agree with the fact that, um, yes, it would be, it would benefit us as a board to get the opinion of town council.
Terrific, so the motion is made and seconded, I am going, unless there's any further discussion, looking around the table, seeing and hearing none, I will go up the roll, and this is on Mr. Kousha's motion to seek the opinion of town council on the matter. Um, I'll go up the roll, Ms. McIntyre.
I, I'm, so, who, um, who seconded, who, uh, seconded the motion?
Frank did, right?
Yes.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, yes, I agree.
Uh, Ms. Jacobs has recused, Mr. Kousha?
Absolutely.
Mr. Fagan?
Yes.
I am an I, and just because he's handy at the table.
Yes.
Steve, all right, so fi- five Is to seek the opinion of town council, uh, so that that doesn't end, end the matter at all, because we need to, do we have a, do we have a waiver already? No, because this is a brand new application.
Correct, not yet.
And the, the applicant willing to, willing to extend? Okay, thank you very much. Um, uh, it's still appropriate to the, that doesn't necessarily end, end the conversation. I think that what that is, is a segue now, and I think that all the, for the folks who have come tonight, I'd love to hear what you all have to say. Um, so if you could, for those of you who were here last time, if you could replicate that kind of procedure, that would be terrific, kind of come up to the podium. We're gonna have a two-ish minute limit on folks, because we've got, what, 30 people in the room? If we go too long, we're gonna be here until midnight, which we cannot be. So if any, and I'm gonna set a timer, I'm gonna be the jerk with the timer. So anybody from the gallery wants to come up and speak? Name, address, uh, and two minutes, sir, please.
Gary Hall, 54 Ferber Ave. One thing I wanted to point out to you guys real quick is, most everybody never got the letter that was recently sent out, and the mailman, I, I happened to get mine, because my son was home and I had my Ring doorbell on, and he said, oh, I've got tons of these, it's, I know what it is, it's somebody's probably trying to build in the neighborhood. They, most of the people here never got the letter, or the, or the card.
What letter are you referencing?
The most recent one for the-
The notice.
The notice.
Oh.
All right, with that said, I just want to make you aware of that. Um, it would have been great if this actually shown, okay, it does, does look like it shows the actual lots that are, the houses are built on now. There's very few, very few lots that have this, the single, the single lot. The house next to it has always been referred to in our house as the sideways house, it's a, it's a split, put on the lot sideways. We've been down this road before with 55 to 57 Ferber Ave, we had a crowd like this and the board didn't listen. And the building inspector even said to me after the fact, he goes, we screwed up. Please do your diligence and realize that, have you driven through the neighborhood? I know one of you said you have. Um, it's not gonna fit in the neighborhood correctly. Um, are you guys gonna live in the house? You are.
Kindly, kindly address comments to the board, if you would.
Um, yeah, I'm just, you know, if, we're, we're just worried about having another thing like at the end of, um, Wentworth, which was not presented correctly to us and was supposed to have a, uh, have an, an attic space unfinished, which is, turned out to be a full, fully finished attic space in that house and it stands like a tower over everything around it.
But we're not here tonight to discuss Ferber Ave, we're here tonight to discuss-
I, I know that, I know that, I'm just saying-
So let's not get off the subject.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else? Name, address in two minutes, please.
I'm Erin Batolia and I live at, uh, 24 Wentworth Ave, and my house is actually adjacent to 30 Wentworth, the sideways house. And I just, I know that they're, they're saying that this lot would be similar, which the only way that the sideways house doesn't look so ridiculous is because there's an empty lot next to it. The owner, Jack, could barely walk down his, so our driveway butts his grass, and he could barely walk to his backyard without coming onto our driveway, that's how close his house is to our driveway, and I can't even imagine what a house next to that would look like on the same lot size. It just would seem so, to me, out of character with the neighborhood, as you had stated, you had said that you had driven through. And, um, I just, I love the neighborhood and I just can't even imagine what that would look like, how congested that would make it look, and that's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Hi, name, address, and two minutes, please.
Stephen Batolia from 24 Wentworth Ave. I just want to ask, does, um, the board members who are working remotely and are not on site, are they aware of the attendance of the Wentworth Ave neighborhood here, who is in objection?
Yeah, so this is being, this is being broadcast as well.
Okay, excellent. Um, so I have updated photos of- So I have updated photos of in front of the property from this Saturday during that rainstorm. And I know I brought this up at the last meeting, but that property floods on the street, and it's a real concern. And it really should have a sewer drain installed. I have live photos with some measurements on it. And in periods of higher-than-average precipitation, it does breach into the neighboring driveway, into the garage. And with construction runoff and construction settlement, I just think without a sewer drain, this is going to make negative effects for the neighboring properties. So I have updated photos.
If you could, just give those to Jen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wentworth Avenue? I'd like to enter, this is, Jack couldn't be with us tonight. He's the owner of thirty Wentworth. What's that?
So they call it sideways?
Yeah, the sideways house. Jack owns the sideways house, and he wants to enter this in. Really, the thing that strikes me about this is that we had laws that establish this neighborhood, you know, a million years ago. And what ended up happening is all these people built all these houses and stuff. Over the years, these laws, the zoning laws have changed, and they've changed for a reason, okay? I grew up in South Lawrence, three deckers, side by side by side by side. Every time a house would catch fire, if you lived next door, the only thing you could hope is that when the house next to you caught fire, only your siding on your house would melt. Not that your house would catch fire, because they're so damn close to each other, okay? This kind of thing that's going to happen here is going to put a house twenty-two feet away from another house? This is a problem. We changed these zoning laws for a reason, and I'm guessing the reason is safety, okay? And, you know, my heart goes out to these folks. They've had this property for a long time, they haven't been able to use it. Sorry. There's a reason why we do this stuff. I just can't see building a house like that in our neighborhood. It's going to be another sideways house smack on top of the one that's already there. If that house came before you guys today, you'd say no. You'd say no. You've already clearly made that clear, that this is not a conforming lot. It's not big enough. It's not enough frontage. When these guys came before in two thousand and one, it wasn't two variances, it was six. It was all four sides, frontage and square footage. Six variances, not two, six. So please just don't do this.
Thank you. Could I have that? That's from...
Absolutely. This is Jack, who we go. Thank you, thank you.
It's pretty brief, I'm going to read it into the record. Jack Maffey, Maffay? How do you pronounce this? Maffey? Jack Maffey, thirty Wentworth Ave, North Andover. Board of November twentieth, twenty twenty-one. To whom it may concern, I'm ready to express any of my objection, I'm sorry. I'm ready to express my objection that the, oh, boy, the something proposal to build a single-family home at thirty-six Wentworth Ave. I am the abutting to the south. My house is thirteen feet away from that lot. I was told it was unbuildable when I bought my house in two thousand seventeen. It is only forty-five hundred square feet, too small to accommodate a new house and driveway without crowding my house substantially. Sincerely, Jack Maffey. So thank you for bringing that. Anybody else? Come on up to the podium. Name, address, two minutes, please. When you get there, of course.
I have a short blaze in my tape. So my name is Joe Payne, and I'm at thirty-three Wentworth. So I guess the three lots have been combined. I just learned that tonight, so very interesting. So I would echo a lot that's been said, both verbally and in writing, and for the sake of brevity. Let me also acknowledge that I never received a notice for this meeting, something that has been said already. Now, what struck me during tonight's discussion is two zoning board members' comments. One is the look and feel of the neighborhood. I think this gentleman made mention of that, and then someone virtually had mentioned about... What was it that? I forgot. Does anyone remember that? In any case, there were two particular things that struck me with respect to this request. It is the second one, the voice of the neighborhood. And so those two points actually resonated because I am new to the neighborhood. I bought in twenty twenty, and I would tell you that I probably would not have brought, purchased the home at thirty-three Wentworth if this side-by-side, very, very small, out-of-place structures were in front of me. So I would beseech the board to not approve this project moving forward for two reasons. One, it absolutely would disregard the voice of the neighborhood. And then, secondly, it, quite frankly, as I understood, I'm not a lawyer here, but as I understood, on two major points, in terms of the request for variances, the lot size and the street frontage, we would have a sixty-four percent reduction of what's required and a forty-eight percent reduction. So and the second reason why I think it should be disapproved would be it would make a mockery of the zoning bylaws. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Mary Ann Fitzgibbons Alonso, twenty-five Wentworth Ave. Just to give you some more history of the neighborhood, my family's been in that neighborhood since nineteen seventy-two. My parents bought the three-family that's on Ferber Ave for twenty-eight thousand dollars. The house next door to that, my brother owns it now, the house next door to that just went under agreement. It was listed at seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The reason I bring it up is because both of those are double lots. So you are precedent-setting, should you decide to make these variances allowable. Whoever bought that lot did not buy it for the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar three-family. They bought it for the real estate of the double lot. I am asking you to take that into consideration because you are not just doing something on Wentworth. You are potentially changing the face of the neighborhood that I've lived in for forty-seven years. I am proud to live in that neighborhood. We used to call it the hood because the houses were worth twenty-eight thousand dollars. And now they're going for seven hundred and fifty thousand. Are you joking? We finally get our values up, and you're going to put them right back down. They're going to look like Lawrence. And we already can hear the train and the music. We don't need any more. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, seeing and hearing none, I think that we are kind of at...
I just have a question. I had submitted my letter...
We need you up at the podium.
I just had a question for you. I had submitted my letter last time. Is that still something that you guys will review, or do I have to restate?
Because this is a finding, this is actually a different matter.
Oh, okay.
It's the same subject, just a different matter. It's a finding, so I would encourage you to either resubmit it or reread it.
Okay, so I have it in the car, so I can resubmit it for this finding as well.
Yes, yep.
But really, the points that I wanted to make are a few different things. I think, and this again is a...
I'm sorry, Mr....
Oh, sorry, Julie Desmond, twenty-five Highland View Ave.
Thank you.
So I am the lot that's abutting in the back of this property. We built our house in two thousand and twelve, and that was an empty lot. So I just want to make sure that the board is aware that that was available into two thousand and twelve, if they did want to purchase for more square footage. The other thing is there has been multiple attempts to purchase the property. Every abutting at one point has offered to purchase the land to keep it kind of as is. I understand that it was denied based on the not, the owner not feeling that the property was a good value, or our offers were a good value, I should say. And the other thing is that, under my understanding, and again, I'm not a lawyer, I'm not anything else, I have, to my understanding, in nineteen fifty-seven, I think is when the laws changed, you still needed five thousand square feet, and this lot still would have been under the five thousand square feet that would be needed. And then in nineteen seventy-four, I think that's when the laws did change. And again, kind of saying it again, they changed for a reason, and that was to kind of protect the neighborhood. So I appreciate you guys and hope that you see it from our side. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the gallery?
Can I just bring up one more thing? In this packet?
Sorry, Gary Hall, fifty-four Ferber Ave.
Thank you.
In this packet, under the project information, it says proposed use one-two family. Just curious why it says that.
I think that's just the zoning, right? One-to-two family?
It says one slash two family.
I don't know.
Well, what's that category? One-to-two family?
Yeah.
Yeah, single family.
Anything else from the gallery?
Because I'm actually in favor, but can I speak?
Absolutely. It's the gallery's time. Come on up, name, address, and two minutes.
My name is Leslie LaFrance from Itis. I live in Hampstead, New Hampshire, at sixty-two Timber Lane Road. I am also the Realtor involved because we had to get a... In the past, the history that they just spoke of, there was one offer. It was a verbal offer, and it was from Ms. Desmond. That was the only offer that I've been heard of in the past as trying to help my cousin. So it is my grandfather that owned this in the beginning as well. And I've known over the years that they couldn't build on it during the times when they were alive. They died young, they were in the war, they had injuries, they had, or fire department in Patrick's father's case. They couldn't build on it. And all these years, we have been in the neighborhood. Everybody's enjoyed the lot. We have paid the taxes on it. Now, what would happen if this can't come forward and this can't be built on? What's going to happen? What happens with the lot? If it doesn't get built on and we can't enjoy it, and like some of these people have bought in into the neighborhood over the years, or some people got to stay over the years? We never got to do that. And if this can't come forward, what are we going to do with the lot? We can't ever build on it? We just have to keep it for everybody else's enjoyment? It doesn't make sense from that point of view. So we've been in the neighborhood longer than anybody else in our family, and we can't enjoy it. What should we do with it? Should we keep paying taxes on it, never be able to use it? Can we tent on it if we feel like sometimes? You know? I just don't understand. I see that you don't want something coming in. Would it be better if it was a bigger house? Would you feel better if a larger structure were put on it? Would that be more keeping with the neighborhood rather than a modest size that fits in those dimensions? Would you prefer that with the neighborhood like a bigger house? I'd just like to figure out a better solution. Seems like where we're going right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Stephen Betolia from twenty-four Wentworth Ave. I would just like to say that the abutting neighbors have actually taken care of that property like it was their own. They've cut the grass, they've raked the leaves, they've picked up the sticks. I've never seen anyone since I've lived there... And we've been there five years? We've been there since two thousand and fifteen. I have never seen anyone else maintain the property except for the abutting neighbors. So I just want that on the record.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Mary Ann Fitzgibbons Alonso, twenty-five Wentworth Ave. To be clear, again, I've lived there for forty-seven years in this neighborhood, and I would echo what Steve said. It was a wooded lot. We used to play in it when we were little. They took down the trees, probably with plans to build. And I have never once seen them come and have a picnic. I've never once seen them with a rake in their hand. I've never once seen them. I didn't know who they were. Forty-seven years in that neighborhood, this is the first time I'm seeing my neighbor. Additionally, I'm going to try to say this as softly as I can. You had multiple opportunities to sell that house when your families, when their families, I'm talking to you, when their families were in, people dying young and having down on their luck, they could have sold the property then. They've chosen not to. Now, rules change. When I was growing up, I think the drinking age was eighteen. When I got to eighteen, it was twenty-one. I wasn't grandfathered in. I had to wait my turn. Rules change. Life happens. You have options to make decisions. If you choose not to, you know, take advantage of it, then you're choosing not to take advantage of it. But now we don't have to pay because you guys couldn't do something, they couldn't do something with it way back when. You had since nineteen eighteen to do something. It's been over a hundred years. It's an empty lot.
Thank you.
You know who I am? I'm just addressing the fact of, in ninety-eight, yes, it was full of trees. Neighbors were, we have trailers dumped there. There's a trailer in that picture there. Leaves were dumped there. I was, you know, geez, you think Lawrence looks bad. This was Lawrence in North Andover. I cleared all the, we cleared all the trees. I did plant the grass. It was a crapshoot if it was even going to grow, you know? It was, it was, what do you call it? We did do our pot cleaning it up, you know? And yes, we did have opportunity, you know? It's tough to have opportunities when you're a single mother raising eight children, raising two kids by themselves, okay? I get it, you know? As you say, the laws change and everything. I just want to say, yes, we were there, we have been maintaining it. Taxes were paid year after year as a buildable lot, still right today as a buildable lot. And it was, for twenty years, for forty years, my mother paid the taxes, year after year, just hoping and praying that we were going to do something with it. And, you know, here we are. And that's all I have, sorry.
Thank you. All right, so I think that we have kind of exhausted the substance of things and tread into the emotional territory. So I think that we are going to be done for tonight on this particular matter. Perhaps there should be a motion when, one month, right? One month.
It's a town council. You think you could get a decision within a month?
January eleventh. So shall there be a motion to continue to January eleventh?
I make a motion to continue to January eleventh.
Thank you, Alan. Is there a second?
Oh, sir.
And I will go up the roll. Ms. McIntyre?
Yes.
Mr. Kousha?
Yes.
Mr. Fagan? Is he still here?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm a guess, and Frank?
Frank.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, we are continued to January eleventh on this matter. So the next matter on the agenda is the same address? This is the continued hearing on the variances. Shall we do this? It would be my expectation that we do the same. All right, thank you with the indulgence of the applicant. So shall we continue this matter to January, the next matter I'm referring to, to January eleventh? Is there a motion?
I make a motion to continue to January eleventh.
Thank you, Alan.
Second.
Frank seconded. I will go up the roll again. Ms. McIntyre?
Yes.
Mr. Kousha?
Yes.
Mr. Fagan?
Yes.
I'm an I. Mr. Steve? What do you have? Thank you. We are continued to January eleventh. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we are not done. If everybody could exit quietly, save your conversation for the hallway. We have one more matter on the agenda for hearing, and that is, if you give me a second to find my agenda. Thirty thirty-five Willow Street. Would the applicant come on up?
Quickly, a comment to the chair.
Oh, we're in transition. Do I really have to listen?
Yeah, because I have to go to the airport.
All right, yeah. You had mentioned that.
For all fairness to the exposition, I don't have to leave ten minutes and do what they're going to do. So I think it would behoove you to dump me and put somebody else in my place.
It got noisy in here. I couldn't quite hear you. What I am going to say, though, Ron, thank you for coming tonight, and we will see you next month.
Have a very good holidays, everybody.
Right back at you.
Happy holidays, Ron.
Thank you. Thank you.
That volume issue seems to have changed. It's resolved itself, so. For the feedback, whatever it was. Five. Four. Five. That's my fault, sorry.
Thank you for your patience. I hope that was a lot of fun. Just give us a second. Mr. Cork, would you mind opening the hearing?
Yeah, just give me a second. What happened to everybody?
I was going to say.
Everybody's gone.
Yeah.
Was it something I said?
I didn't think I was going to have as many angry campers for my son. We'll see, you know? Someone could speak up. I don't think I'm going to have to say emotional response.
Notice this hereby, given that the North Andover Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at the North Andover Town Hall at 120 Main Street, North Andover, Mass. On Tuesday, December 14, 2021, at 7:30 PM to all parties interested. The petition of Expose?
Expose.
Excuse.
You're not the first one to make that.
Excuse me. Of Expose Signs and Graphics Inc. Andrew Clark, I assume that's you?
No, that's actually the owner. I'm Patrick Devine, I'm the account manager handling this client.
Okay. For property at 335 Willow Street, MAP 25, Parcel 74, North Andover, Mass. On 1-845 in the I-1 zoning district. The applicant is requesting a variance pursuant with the town and North Andover zoning bylaws, section 195-6.6 G3, permitted signs, industrial district in the I-1 zoning district for the purpose of allowing replacement of the existing sign. Specifically, applicant is requesting the placement of a sign needing a relief variance of 32 feet from the property line. The setback required is eight feet and the setback required is 40 feet. Application and supporting materials are available for review at the office of the zoning department located in 120 Main Street, North Andover, Mass. On Monday, Wednesdays and Thursdays from the hours of 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Tuesday from the hours of 8:30, excuse me, Tuesday from the hours of 8:00 AM to 5:30 PM. And Friday from the hours of 8:00 AM to 11:30 AM. By order of the Board of Appeals, D. Paul Clark Jr., Esquire.
Do practice. Do practice, like in front of the mirror or in the car?
It comes natural. It comes natural.
Why don't you introduce yourself and let us know what we're doing tonight?
Great. So, I'm Patrick Devine. I am the account manager for Dacon, or for Expose Signs, representing Dacon, who has Baconjoy here as a client. They contracted us as the signage vendor. We have already installed, and you can actually see it in one of the pictures here, we've already installed a building sign which was approved for this property. But the ground sign, we are pursuing a relief for the 32 feet as there's a bit of a hardship with this location. There are multiple other signs on the property as I've taken pictures of the four neighboring signs. The dimensions that I have provided here are from the street. I didn't have the property lines set up for each one of these properties. However, the property line would only assume that this distance would be closer as opposed to than it is from the street here. So, the two hardships that we have right now is, well, the zoning bylaws were changed after construction of this whole property went about. So, these two properties here, the Executive Center and Jeffren, they're, the configuration of their parking lots are to a point where 40 feet would put their sign well into the parking lot or well into the building. As you can see, you know, this one's 10 feet, 4 inches, again from the street. Not sure where the property line is there. And again, this one's 11.6. We have 26, 4 feet for this one, which is closer to the 40 feet, but still not compliant. And then 11 feet, 8 inches here. So, with the configuration of the property that we have putting it at 40 feet, the property since then has been landscaped, paved. So, putting it at 40 feet would put it just shy of 10 feet away from the building, either putting it in a mulch bed or where the parking lot is. So, there was a previous sign at the space that was removed before I was brought onto the project, that the previous sign was about double the size, as you can see in the gray footprint here, and that one fell 3 feet, 6 inches from the property line. The sign that we're proposing is about half the size of the previous sign at 8 feet into the property. And the other hardship is this being a distribution center, there are quite a few 18-wheelers that come to this property fairly regularly. With all of the other signs neighboring much closer to the street, you know, an operator and one of the 18-wheelers would think to look closer to the seat as opposed to 40 feet into the property for their location. So, having the sign set back that far, you know, you have potential of drivers passing it. And while it is a big loop, as you can see from this aerial shot here, while they can go completely around, we can anticipate what every driver does, you know, individually. So, you know, you can assume them backing up, trying to turn around, and this could create, you know, a good amount of congestion in a fairly narrow space. There is zero main intersections at this space. As I had said, it's a loop, so there isn't through traffic that goes through here. Wouldn't be creating any blind spot or anything for a densely trafficked area. And also, our sign is not illuminated. So, it has no light pollution. And essentially, we don't, you know, see how it can be offensive to anybody or a hazard or anything like that.
How long ago was the sign removed?
That, so, I'm not sure exactly when the sign was removed. I was brought onto this project about six months ago and when I had conducted my site survey, there was nothing in that space.
Is there a foundation from where it was or?
There's not a foundation. Right now, there's a, they have a temporary sign right here. That's just a, it's like a two-posted wooden PT post sign that they have put in the ground. But as far as the footprint from the previous sign, I think it had been landscaped since then, so there was nothing, and there was nothing to go off of where exactly it was. However, this, you know, this plan here along with these dimensions were provided to us by a land surveyor, which had documentation showing the sizing of the previous size sign and the location in relation to the property lines. And that's where they came up with this drawing, showing how our sign is, you know, more than double the distance from the property line of the previous sign was and also half of the size.
So, do you, you have a plot plan that has the signage on this? So, this must have been originally approved at one point to have signage on this.
Yeah, so, since that was approved, the bylaws had changed. So, this plot plan, we actually had made last month because we initially had submitted for this variance last month and we did not have the stamped drawing. We had, you know, some drawings that the previous owner had supplied us and that's why they had brought in this land surveyor to...
So, no, what I'm asking is, on this lot, when it was developed, it had to go to, when it was approved? So, this sign, because it had a variance at some point, or with, because it's not a non-conforming sign, it had to have approval prior. So, you're trying to put it at the same place. And my question is, it had to have approval somewhere from some board to put it where it is? If you could provide a plot plan that shows that?
Well, what changes about the zoning? Was it?
Was it compliant previously? Was it?
No, it wasn't 40 feet down.
It is my understanding that when the other sign was permitted, it, the bylaws dictated different information and that this 40-foot setback.
Right. So, when that was installed, it didn't need a variance? That's what I'm asking, I guess.
Yes. Well, I mean, that is my understanding because due to every single one of the neighboring signs, nobody is anywhere near the realm of 40 feet here. In fact, we are closer, we are farther into the property than three of these four signs. There's only one sign that is actually farther than we're proposing right now from that street, from that property line. But even that one doesn't come anywhere close to 40 feet.
So, anyway, you don't know what the original permitting status was for the previous sign, whether it needed a variance or if it was as of right?
Correct.
But it's available for you to find?
I believe so.
It is.
And when approximately circa dates on the original is that 90s, 80s, 70s? How, you mentioned that the development of this industrial park area preceded the changes in terms of, so when was the park developed and when was the orig, you know, when was the building built?
That information I do not have.
It looks fairly modern, like, I mean, if I was kind of just swag, I would say must be in the 80s or, you know, I mean, that's not that old. It doesn't look that old to me anyways.
Yeah, like I said, I have not gathered that information as far as when the, when the previous sign was permitted. If the previous sign was permitted, I just was given the location of it and in comparison, the, my personal survey of the location and the setbacks of all of the neighboring and adjacent signs for this property.
Ms. Jacobs, haven't heard anything from you.
I would think that would be a good thing.
All right.
I have nothing to add.
Anything else from the board?
It seems like a logical, okay, I've been, as I go, seems very logical to me, but there's just some of, you know, the fact that other people are, already have the variances and it's not that, it's not that old. I mean, it would seem like that information, if you could just give us that information, I think, you know, we could make a decision on this.
I can collect that information, but I just did not have that, that, I did not gather that information prior to this meeting, so I can't, you know, I can't specify when variance were obtained, if they were obtained, by who they were obtained. That was not conducted during my research.
That doesn't matter, to me personally, that doesn't, however, the previous sign was approved doesn't matter that much. I think in this location with it put in that, there's really no harm to it, so I don't, to me, I don't think we have to go through that step. I would be on Frank's team on that one. I don't need any, myself, it sounds like Frank too, doesn't need any further research on this. The signage appears pretty modest, certainly appears in character with the balance of the industrial park. It's, you know, it's cute. What is Baconjoy? What do they bake?
They're a distribution center for, you know, different baked goods like bread and pies and kind of like a hostess type thing.
I could answer that because I went online.
Did you? What do they bake?
Okay. First of all, I want to thank this company for locating here in North Andover and they have an expansion going on next door.
Oh, yeah. I see their trucks everywhere because, I mean, you know, with my job, I'm driving all over the place. I see Baconjoy trucks everywhere.
In addition to all that we've said, they kept all their people working through COVID.
Really?
Okay, and they laid nobody off and their entire fleet of people worked, okay? Not that that should mean anything, okay? And I have to agree with Frank that it's all academic, okay? What we have here is the sign that's, they want to put here. I drove down there this morning, the sign, with the sign that's there, it's going to announce you're at Baconjoy. Now, what do they do? They make different, their key to fame is they freeze their dough, be it brownie dough or cookie dough or bread dough, and they ship the frozen dough to Market Basket or to a restaurant or to a various bakery and they defrost the dough and then they make whatever they're making, brownies, cookies, loaf breads, whatever, what's required. And one of their claim to fame is, they make something, a dough that you can, that you do not need a pan for, okay? They ship it on paper. And I guess with the, like, you scoop the dough and the dough is in like a cupcake?
Yeah.
And you just put it in the oven and you have, and it's the cupcakes. For...
So, they don't bake? I bake.
You bake? What, what? And, no, no, no. And I think they have a retail store there.
Oh, do they?
Okay, okay, we can buy different loaves and stuff. But their main business is selling frozen dough to various places for them to make the bread.
That's wild.
Am I right or wrong?
I see the trucks are on the semis.
Yeah, they got a really recognizable logo. It's definitely, as I said, something that before I had taken them on as a client, you know, because they don't necessarily advertise in the stores. They do, they sell, they send, but if you go to Market Basket, it won't have a Baconjoy sticker slapped on it, but you'll see it in one of their, you know, in one of the displays that they have there that they have it sliced, you know, or individual cupcakes for you to grab. So, I've seen the trucks, but, I mean, same thing throughout my whole company when, you know, this has been brought up quite a bit because we already made one of the signs for them. And everybody's like, I see those trucks everywhere, but I've never eaten a Baconjoy. And it's like, you probably have, you just, you know, don't know.
Are they producing the material that's being, that's distributed out of that facility? Or is it coming from when it goes to that facility?
That actually, I don't know because I'm working with Dacon, who is, Baconjoy is a client of them, so I don't have direct communication. That's why I said I didn't get any samples or anything like that from them. So, I'm not privy to what exactly goes on behind those walls, but we're just the signage vendor that is, you know, conducting the construction and...
Dacon is the general contractor who's building the, or the addition, I don't know, is it an addition or separate?
I think it was like a redevelopment. I think that there was kind of a, because it was an existing structure, I think that they just kind of, you know, did some internal upgrades and as far as like the branding aspect of it, this was...
I think it was, I think it might have been an expansion.
Yeah.
For space, but...
I mean, this location is located at a long, a very long winding road.
It's fun back there.
Okay, and the business almost at the end of it, right?
Oh, yeah, it's in the back corner. That's why, like, to go here, you need to, you need to go out of your way.
I see no reason why. Why should we punish the guy with him having to go get all this other information?
Oh, we don't punish anybody, Alan.
It's not what the last guy would have said.
Alexandria, Ellen, do I think I see a heartbeat on the monitor here?
That is me. I have to disclose that I do work for a company that builds stainless units for their lines, BNJ lines, for any factory.
So, then, I think I hear you suggest that you may have a direct financial interest in this application and you're recusing yourself?
I actually am because, so, everything, everything that BNJ does is, has to be stainless because obviously it's the food industry. So, I work for a company that provides those stainless lines for Baconjoy.
Okay. So, with that then, we have lost Ron and we have lost Ellen. So, that means that both Frank and Steve are voting, right? So, all right.
See, I know the lingo. It's called BNJ, so.
Yeah.
So, that lets you know I know a little too much about it.
Any additional questions, comments, concerns from the board? Seeing and hearing none, look in the gallery for which there is nobody. Anybody wish to be heard on this matter? Seeing and hearing none. Shall there be a motion to close the public?
I make a motion to close the public comment.
Motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Steve. Motion made and seconded. I'll just go around the room. Frank?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
And Alexandria?
Hi.
I'm an eye. Public comment is closed. Any deliberation from the board?
I think we've already had it.
I think you are right. So, with that said, there's an additional page in here. I think that when we approve, we're just going to be using the big plans because this looks like it's a draft. It's got some like comments and questions in it to yourselves.
Yeah, I think that, I think that who mainly handles the paperwork was kind of just trying to make sure they had as much put into that packet as possible.
Totally understand.
So, which one are we doing? This one or this one?
Just this one.
Just that one, yes.
Just the big one.
The big one, okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve a variance, to grant the variance pursuant with the town in North Andover zoning bylaws. Section 195 dash 6.6 G3, permitted signs, industrial districts in the I- I-1 zoning district for the purpose of allowing replacement of the existing signs. Specifically, applicant is requesting the placement of a sign needing a relief variance of 32 feet from the property line. The setback proposed is eight feet and the setback required is 40 feet. And I'd like to make reference of a plan drawn by the Mormon Cameron Group that's dated November 3rd, two, uh, 2021.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kuscha. Is there a second?
Second.
Ah, well done, Frank. Steve, you don't wanna play anymore. Motion made and seconded.
We gotta share it a little bit. I don't want, I don't want all the seconds.
Let's go around the room and start in the sky. Alexandria? Ms. Jacobs? Alexandra?
Sorry, sorry, my phone was in my pocket.
I got you.
Aye.
Thank you, Frank.
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Allen?
Yes.
I'm an aye, so you are approved unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Last item on the agenda is just a notice, uh, a 40B chapala letter notice of intent to sell. There is no action. That is just on the agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Ellen.
I'll second it.
I'm second.
Motion made and seconded. Going around the room. Frank?
Aye.
Alexandria?
Second, I'm an aye, yeah.
Steve?
Aye.
Aye, Allen?
Aye.
I'm an aye, we are adjourned. Thank you all.
I'll join too.